The regular meeting of the Mishawaka Common Council from Monday, June 7th, 2021, will please come to order. This evening, we will once again be operating under some modified rules of procedure and provide remote access to the public. To that end, members of the public will be asked to place their microphone on mute during the meeting with the exception of any public hearing. At the appropriate point in the public hearing, I will invite the public to unmute their microphone for purposes of submitting such comments as they wish to make, one person at a time. All persons wishing to make public comments will be asked to first state their name and address for the record. After completing his or her public comments, members of the public will once again be asked to place their microphone on mute, and we thank everyone for their cooperation. Since we have some enhanced physical attendance this evening, which is nice to see as we're coming out of the pandemic, one of our standard requests for those in the audience is also, if you would, please remove your hats. Thank you, Brian. And those of you who have, we used to say pagers and cell phones, but I don't know that anybody has brought a pager in here for years and years, but to the extent you have your cell phones, please check to make sure that they are on mute or vibrate only. And with that, we will move into the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll ask everybody to please rise and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Here.
Mr. Benicki?
Here.
Mr. Hazen? He was there. He just left. I'm just going to leave him blank for right now.
Please do.
Mr. Mammalanti?
Here.
Mr. Emmons? Mr. Belovich?
Here.
Mr. Compton?
Here.
Mrs. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Here. Approval of amendments of our regular meeting of May 17th, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, then the minutes will stand approved as received from the Clerk's office. Petitions, communications, remonstrance, and memorial.
Yes, Mr. President. I have petition number 2021-07 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council, City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is a University Market Place PUD amendment to allow an automobile dealership and service center at 7207 Grape Road. This is the former J.C. Penney Home Store, and it is signed by Jeffrey Jors. We also have petition number 2021-08 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council, City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from C1 District to C7 District to allow a restaurant with drive-thru part of 2754 Lincoln Way East. It's the existing parking lot for the Mishawaka Inn. This is signed by Mr. Patel and Ms. Patel. Petition number 2021-09 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council, City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is an annexation and zoning of 19.02 acres to R1 for a proposed single-family residential subdivision, Autumn Ridge Phase 4. This is signed by Art and Carolyn Mosher. Petition number 2021-10 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council, City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is an annexation and zoning of 5.24 acres to I1 for a proposed self-storage facility at 16996 State Road 23, and this is signed by Ken Bechtold. Okay. Mr. Hazen is appearing on my screen.
All right. The record will reflect that Councilman Hazen has joined us remotely. Good evening, Mr. Hazen.
We now have a public hearing on vacation 2021-01 required by state statute on behalf of CAC Properties LLC, right-of-way alley vacation, 16-foot-wide alley north of Brown, south of Catalpa, between Forest and Benton Avenue for the length of 215 feet.
Thank you. We will now move into the public hearing on proposed vacation 2021-01. Anyone wishing to speak in favor who is physically present, please come forward to the podium and begin by stating your name and address for the record.
My name is Terry Lang from Lang Feeny &amp; Associates. Our address is 715 South Michigan Street in South Bend. I represent the petitioner, CAC Properties. CAC Properties bought five lots along Brown Street there and are proposing to develop new home sites there. In working with the engineering and the planning office, it was suggested that we petition to vacate an alley that had never been used probably in 75 years when the plat was originally platted. So we are following through with that recommendation of both the Planning Commission and the Engineering Department requesting that that be vacated then and divvied up between the adjacent property owners.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lang? One question, although I don't imagine that there would be any objections under the circumstances that you accurately described. What type of outreach have there been to the neighboring property owners to gauge any concerns that they may have?
At the hearing previously, the adjacent property immediately to the west showed up in support of that petition. The gentleman that we had, that the property, that petitioner had bought the property from owns a majority of the property to the north. So we pretty much have everybody notified of that and...
Fantastic. Any other questions for Mr. Lang? No? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed vacation? If you would, please come forward to the podium. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed vacation? Please unmute your microphone. Is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed vacation? And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed vacation? Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then we will close the public hearing on proposed vacation 2021-01, subject to further action later this evening. We have no report of any special committee this evening nor any ordinances on first reading, so we will move into resolutions.
Resolution R. 21-12, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, adopting a written policy establishing the procedures for electronic participation at meetings.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on proposed resolution 2021-12. Anyone physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If you would, please come forward to the podium. Mr. Triple, could we perhaps impose upon you, since you were gracious enough to draft this resolution, to provide a brief overview of the resolution?
Sure. This will allow the council, post gubernatorial emergency orders, to continue to allow remote participation by both the public and members of the council as necessary. As of July 1, that will no longer, the governor has given the indication he will not extend the order beyond July 1. The state legislature, in their most recent session, set forth procedures by which various public bodies can have remote sessions. It's been codified now in Indiana, and this will allow the council to continue to pursue remote participation.
Thank you.
Consistent with that statute, so...
Thank you, and thank you again for your work on putting this together for us.
Sure.
Then is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak with regard to, in favor of, the proposed resolution? Is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If so, please unmute your microphone. Is there anyone physically present, then, who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Please come forward. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Are there any council members who wish to speak? Again, thank you, Mr. Triple, for your work. I think one of the positives that has come out of the pandemic is our ability to be able to do further outreach to the community through remote means, to be able to allow that many more people to view our council meetings either in real time or after the fact. And I think we've all experienced positive comments from the community, so this will allow us to continue to provide that public service, not only now but on and into the future as we move into the new city hall and have even greater abilities to be able to allow the public to participate in our meetings. So thank you to everyone involved, including our IT staff, who allow us that to happen. And if there are no other questions or comments from the council, I will call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please pull the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The resolution passes 8-2-0.
Ordnances on second reading.
Proposed ordinance number 2021-17, an ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is right-of-way alley vacation, 16-foot-wide alley north of Brown Street, south of Catalpa, between Forest and Benton Avenue for the length of 215 feet, and they have requested, the Planning Department has requested an amendment. DeMaye?
Thank you. At the request of the Planning Department, and in order to address a scrupulous error or clerical error, I'll call it, with regard to the reference in the petitioner and the original ordinance, at this point, the Chair would entertain a motion to delete the original ordinance, proposed ordinance 2021-17 in its entirety, and replace it with the revised ordinance listing the correct petitioner as distributed to us by the City Clerk's office.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to delete in its entirety proposed ordinance 2021-17 and substitute instead a amended ordinance listing the correct name of the petitioner. Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please pull the council on the amendment to the proposed ordinance?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The amendment passes 8-2-0.
Thank you. And then with that, we have the committee report on the proposed ordinance as amended.
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom is referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 2021-17 as amended, report that they have examined said matter and that, in their opinion, should be adopted. This is signed by the majority of the committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, then, Madam Clerk, would you please pull the council on the committee report?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
May report passes 8-2-0.
Thank you. We will then move into the second reading and public hearing on proposed ordinance number 2021-17 as amended. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium.
Terry Lang from Lang Feeny &amp; Associates, I have nothing additional to add. Thank you.
Thank you for your brevity, Mr. Lang. Any questions for Mr. Lang? Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. I was, Mr. Lang, sorry, just quickly, I was looking at the pictures here, and it appears that some of the properties have structures that are in the alley. There's a pool that's in that alley now, or part of a pool that's in the alley, and at least, you know, this photograph, and it looks like there's a shed or a garage that's already in the alley.
There's an old garage there that's going to be taken down.
Okay. All right. And is there anything, like, it looks like this house at the corner of Benton and Brown, the, if the property is going to be divided in half, it looks like the fence and the, it looks like that house is using proportionally more of the alley than they would own?
Well, I can't vouch, I haven't done a survey on his piece, but when he was, when he was at the meeting, he had indicated that his fence was into the alley area there. By how much, I couldn't tell you for sure, but he spoke in favor of it. He'd been using it for years, so he was in favor of the petition.
So just by appearance, it looks like that he has extended more than halfway across that alley. If that were the case, would he have to take his fence down and, or could he come?
Potentially.
Yeah.
It would be up to the resident that lives to the north. By state law, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, when the alley is vacated, each party is entitled to half on both sides of it, the way this was platted. So, you know, if he wants to approach the neighbor to the north and wants to purchase more than half from him, or if the guy don't want it and he wants to give it to him, that's up to them to work out those details.
Okay.
But it can happen, and it has happened in the past.
Yeah. Yeah. Or he could just offer to let the neighbor use his pool.
Yeah. This time of the year, it might come in handy.
Might be nice, yeah. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Volker. Mr. Benicki?
Yeah. So are they going to build four or five homes there?
There'll be five.
Okay, because they've got four foundations.
There's four foundations. We had to go through the Board of Zoning Appeals for the last corner lot, which was at the last meeting for that, so that will be probably starting, now that we've got the petition before you for the alley vacation, they'll also have to work on tearing down the garage back there, too.
Yeah, that was my next question, was that garage, because it's been sitting there a long time.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Lang? Thank you, Terry. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance as amended? If you would, please come forward to the podium. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance as amended? Hearing no one, is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance as amended? Please come forward. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance as amended? Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please pull the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The proposed ordinance as amended passes 8-2-0. Proposed ordinance number 2021-18, an ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from C7 auto-oriented restaurant to C4 automobile-oriented commercial, 5603 Grape Road.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom is referred the matter of proposed ordinance 2021-18, report that they have examined said matter and that their opinion should be adopted. This is signed by the majority of the committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, then I guess I'll call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please pull the council on the committee report?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Committee report passes 8-2-0.
Thank you. This is the second reading and public hearing on proposed ordinance 2021-18. Anyone wishing to speak in favor who is physically present, if you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Mike Huber with Abin Marsh Consultants. Can you guys hear me?
We can. And you jumped out ahead of me. I was just going to inquire if anybody who is participating remotely wanted to speak in favor of it. So, please proceed.
Sure. Thank you. I appreciate your time this evening, your consideration of our request. This property has actually been here once before.
I'm sorry if I could interrupt you. Excuse me, sir.
Yes.
Again, could you state your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry. Sure. It's Mike Huber with Abin Marsh Consultants, 315 West Jefferson Boulevard in South Bend. Apologize, I couldn't remember if I said that already or not, but...
It's all right. Thank you, sir.
This property has been here once before. We rezoned from C1 to C7. At that time, we, since that time, we've created two outlots. The intent was that the both outlots, this one on the north and one to the south, would be used and created for proposed drive-through restaurant uses. Since that time, one of the proposed tenants, the drive-through restaurant tenants, has no longer interested in the property, so the property on the north is actually in consideration with a instant oil lube project, and so we're asking for the C7 that we, that we acquired recently to be changed to C4. This is the probably better of the two uses for this proposed zoning use, given that we've got the tire and auto place just adjacent to the north of this. In the original rezoning, we did have some conversations with the apartment complex that's kind of to the northwest of our property. At that time, we agreed that we would stay in communication with them as we developed the final site plan for the project, and we intend to continue to do that as well. With this project now and the C7 used to the south, we've worked with the city engineering and planning departments to create a new entrance into the shopping center and to discontinue the existing access. We're shifting it to the north, kind of more directly in the center of the, of the shopping plaza. It meets the safety goals of city engineering, enhances the plaza, and we think these two uses, these two outlaw uses, will kind of help inject some life into this, into this little strip center in front of, along this Grape Road corridor. So be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Huber? Mr. Benicki?
Yes. Mr. Huber, it'd be nice to see the proposed entrance, but obviously, we can't do that from here. So are they going to close the entrance that's right there next to the restaurant to move it?
That's correct. That's correct. The existing entrance, the city of Mishawaka Engineering had some, some concerns and some issues with how that functions or doesn't function very well, and so we worked with them to identify a location that's kind of centered between the two outlots, kind of centered in front of the ABC warehouse. I will provide access to the plaza that way.
Will that entrance be similar to the one almost straight across the street that's right in and right out only?
It will be a full access there. There will be left in as well as right in, right out, and left out. So this will operate as the full access, much like the, the existing access to the south, but because it's a little further north of the intersection, the Douglas Road intersection, the city, and we agree, feel that it'll function a lot more efficiently and effectively.
So is there going to be like an ingress/egress-type access road right out front?
There'll be a deceleration lane, an acceleration lane, yeah. There'll be some additional right-of-way dedicated from this property to, to get that traffic out, and then, yeah, so there will be.
Okay, because that, I don't know if you've ever been at Grape Road at Christmas time. It is a nightmare. Good luck.
It is. This is one of, there are also two access to this property off of Douglas as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benicki. Other questions for Mr. Huber? Mrs. Volker?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, Mr. Huber. I, I always like to see site, site plans, too, so we, this is going to be, will this have similar landscaping? Is it a, what's the restaurant that's on the corner right now?
Steak and Shake.
Steak and Shake? So will it have similar landscaping around the restaurant and, you know, something to make it a little bit more appealing?
Absolutely. We'll, we will absolutely be in full compliance at the site, final site plan level with the city's zoning ordinance, meeting all of the required landscaping and, you know, parking and paving setbacks and building setbacks that'll be required with that development. So I think that's, you know, for both of these, for both of these developments, as we move forward, specifically this one we're rezoning tonight, but the one to the south that we already rezoned, you know, we are, we are currently just trying to get the zoning secured, and then we will be working collectively between the two sites and the entrance to get the final site plan submitted for all of those, kind of at the same time in conjunction with each other, and present a unified site plan for all of the developments.
So, thank you. So one follow-up question to that. Will the, will the entrance off of Douglas kind of function as an internal roadway?
Correct.
Okay.
As it does now. That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you, Mrs. Volker. Any other questions for Mr. Huber? And thank you, sir. If you would, please remute your microphone. And we will inquire as to whether or not there is anyone else who is participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance. Hearing no one, then is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak against the proposed ordinance? If so, please come forward. And then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak against the proposed Are there any council members who wish to speak? Mr. Benicki?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I've got some concerns about traffic flow, but, I mean, it is Grape Road. I guess the comment I have is, moving forward with, with these petitioners, you know, their proposed move in driveways and things like that, we don't see any of that if they're not here. And, you know, it's their right to be remote, but it's also our right to continue these types of things until they give us that information. I don't know that, that we should continue it today, but I think moving forward, if, if they want, you know, we need more information, we'll just have to continue. I mean, they should, they should have been able to share that. Obviously, they've discussed it with other people. We should have that same information, and we don't. So I will be voting in favor of it today, but moving forward, if I don't have all the information in front of me, I just, I'll have to continue it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benicki. Other questions or comments from the council?
I will echo, echo Mr. Benicki's comments. I think it is helpful and it's appropriate for our process to be followed and for us to have the best information that we possibly can have when we're acting upon this and be able to ask better questions. So I think we're all adjusting to the remote world, including undoubtedly architects and engineers and others who present to us, but I certainly would be in favor of a motion to postpone at any point in time that a council member feels like they don't have the information that they need in order to make a good, solid decision, but I appreciate your comments, Mr. Benicki.
Thank you. And with that, if there are no other questions or comments from the council, I will call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please pull the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes 8-2-0.
Proposed ordinance number 2021-19, an ordinance amending chapter 137 of the municipal code of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from C1 general commercial to C7 automobile-oriented restaurant 2777 Lincoln Way East.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the common council of the city of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom is referred the matter of proposed ordinance 2021-19, report that they have examined said matter and in their opinion should be adopted. This is signed by the majority of the committee and I move for its acceptance.
Second.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any other questions or comments from the council on the committee report? Hearing none, then Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council on the committee report?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed committee report passes eight to zero.
Thank you. We'll now move into the second reading of public hearing of proposed ordinance 2021-19. Anyone who is physically present, if you would, uh, please come forward to the podium and begin by stating your name and address for the record if you wish to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance. Seeing no one, then-
Mike Huber again, Abbot Marsh Consultants.
Yeah, Mr. Huber, Mr. Huber, Mr. Huber, if you can be patient and let me do my job, I was just going to inquire.
Apologize.
Then with that, if there is anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance, if you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Mike Huber, Abbot Marsh Consultants, 315 West Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana. Um, I, I want to start by apologizing. I, I was under the impression that you guys had the site plans that were provided to the plant commission in their staff reports. Um, and so, um, and, and not being present physically to present them, I, I apologize. I do mean to have you be at a disadvantage for these, um, presentations, and I will do my best, um, a, as I can to, to answer questions specifically related to these. Um, the, the property we're requesting this evening, um, is the Lincoln Way, uh, 2777 Lincoln Way East. Um, it's the former Pizza Hut. It's, uh, adjacent to the McDonald's and the Burger King. Um, the proposed use is a, uh, fast food restaurant as well. Um, we're looking for a rezoning from the C1 to the C7 drive-through restaurant zoning. Um, it is consistent with the neighboring properties. Uh, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan for this area. Um, we have also been working with, um, the city engineering and city planning departments on conceptual site planning for this project as well. Um, the city has asked us to, um, because our current existing access onto Lincoln Way Avenue is effectively adjacent almost to Mary Ellen Drive, um, we are removing our, we're proposing to remove our access onto, uh, Lincoln Way Avenue, um, as a way to kind of reduce any potential conflicts between Mary Ellen and that entryway, and we'll be accessing the property off of Mary Ellen. Um, and, and so, um, we're, again, still in the, in the site planning process, uh, conceptually with the city. Uh, that will have to receive, um, plant commission site plan approval. Um, we did, uh, knowing that this is a, a relatively tight site, um, we did receive BZA, uh, approval at a May meeting for a reduction in required parking to 26 spaces. Um, we, we may also be coming, um, back in for a further reduction as we work through the site planning process. Um, there, there was some indication from VZA that the, that they might accept 22 as we've got a 30-seat restaurant, which would be 15 seats, uh, 15 cars for the 30 seats, and then seven cars for employees. So, um, we, we kind of agreed that the 22 might be the, the appropriate number that would be a minimum reduction to the parking. Um, but we're still trying to finalize the parking spaces and, and access to the site. Um, we're working with NDOT about potentially using some right-of-way to gain some additional parking, uh, as well. Um, we appreciate your consideration of the request. Again, we, we feel this is consistent with the zoning, and, and again, I apologize if you don't have a site plan in front of you on this, uh, as well this evening. I, I thought it was in the, in the package.
Thank you. Um, any questions for Mr. Huber? Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. I can't, Mr. Huber, I can't tell from the picture, is there a left turn, like a center left turn lane on Lincoln Way? In this location?
Yeah. I don't know. Don't think so.
Currently, there is, uh, not a center left turn lane, uh, at this location on Lincoln Way. Um, there's a kind of a striped area that I think a number of vehicles use as a left turn, especially coming from the east to access McDonald's. Um, but I don't believe there's a formal left turn lane, uh, in the, in the Lincoln Way there.
So, the, I could, the reason I ask-
But I believe, we will, we, we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, the reason I ask the question is, we have, um, an ordinance on first reading that we'll be talking about in two weeks for another, uh, drive-through restaurant in the Mishawaka Inn parking lot. So, you're talking about adding, and I know that isn't your request, but you're talking about adding two restaurants with requiring, um, you know, right and left turn. So, you're adding, gosh, maybe 30 percent, the potential of 30, 30 percent more traffic turning in and out of, um, those restaurants.
So, so for, for this project, um, we're, again, we're proposing to use Mary Ellen. We won't have access directly onto Lincoln Way. Um, you know, we'll be accessing our site off of Mary Ellen Avenue. Um, the, the, the future project that you referenced, um, that is a project we are a, also working with that developer on, and you are, you are correct that as part of that project, um, we are negotiating with NDOT to create a left turn lane into accessing the property to the north, um, that would offset and really, um, eliminate and mitigate those conflict points between traffic trying to, to go south on a left turn and the property's trying to go north on the left turn. Um, again, a, a lot of that was done in conjunction, um, with city engineering requests and, um, negotiations with NDOT. So, between these two projects, we will be working collectively, um, to make sure that that functions in a more safe and more managed, uh, area with a lot of the safety concerns mitigated by adding that left turn lane to allow cars to turn north, and then, and then basically eliminating, um, any direct access onto Lincoln Way for this proposed project and, and pushing that to the, the access off of Mary Ellen.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
And just to correct you, that was a petition. It was not first reading yet, so you'd have two more.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Volker. Any other questions for Mr. Huber? Thank you, sir. If you would, please then, uh, mute your microphone once again. And is there anyone else participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please unmute your microphone.
Okay.
Then is there anyone, uh, physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward to the podium. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? Hearing none, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. We will now move into privilege of the floor. At this point, members of the public are invited to the podium to speak with respect to non-agenda items only under privilege of the floor. And sir, if you would, please begin by stating your name and address for the record.
My name is Dale Nelson. I live at 601 North Burkitt, Mishawaka. I would like to present to the council this evening a petition to have a three-way stop or an all-stop at the intersection of 600 North Burkitt Avenue and 1300 East Mishawaka Avenue located in Mishawaka, Indiana. I have copies of that petition that if any of you would like to have them, I can gladly give them to you.
Um, if you have sufficient copies for all council members, you can, uh, approach and start down at one end and leave them with us. If you don't have sufficient copies, if you leave it with the city clerks, uh, or our madam clerk, she will make copies for us.
It will need one as well.
It appears that you came well prepared.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
I'd love one. I know right where you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Nelson? Sure. We have two members that are not present.
I'll take it for the mayor.
Why don't you, why don't you leave them with Madam Clerk, and she'll make sure that everybody who knows one gets one.
Thank you.
Yep, she'll take good care of you, I promise.
But, um, I'd said, we respectfully request that the intersection located in Lincoln Gardens at the intersection of 600 block of North Burkitt Avenue and the 1300 block of East Mishawaka Avenue be changed from a one-way stop on the southbound North Burkitt Avenue to a three-way stop at the eastbound Mishawaka Avenue and northbound Burkitt Avenue. In the past five to 10 years, the neighborhood has added more younger families, and as a result, we have more children and adults using the crosswalk at this intersection on their way to the Merrifield Park to use a wonderful pool and skating rink, as well as the splash pad in Crawford Park. We have seen an increase in the families using the crosswalk to get to the, to, to get to the walkway along the river, and a lot of other people, young and elderly, riding their bicycles, walking their dogs, jogging and just walking with their families. As a result, when they try to use the crosswalk, it has become difficult to get across the street as the traffic coming north on Burkitt Avenue and coming west on Mishawaka Avenue does not, in many cases, use their turn signals to indicate that, that, what way they intend to go. Children and adults consequently will take the chance and try to cross the street, and we fear that someone may be struck by a vehicle and receive serious injury. We feel that in this, that if this intersection were a three-way stop, the danger of someone being hit by a vehicle and receiving serious injury would be greatly reduced. Thank you for your considerations, the family of, of southeastern Mishawaka. Um, in the process of doing this, I've also found out too, and today we were driving around a little bit, and if you go northbound on North Burkitt, um, just be, just, um, about the third or fourth house down in the trees on a telephone pole that's kind of blocked and says that it is a, a bike route. If you come west on Prospect, on the same, on the corner just prior to turning onto, onto Burkitt Avenue, uh, there is also a bike route sign that is there as well. I also did some other checking out too, and, and I looked up into the Indiana manual, the Uniform Traffic Control Devices. I know there's some of the things, and I had a meeting with the city engineer and, and them this last, or the first of the month, and, uh, they said that, well, we'll have to run all of these different things, checking, uh, traffic count, all that kind of stuff. One of the things that they mentioned at that time, they said that they would take the accident report, at least five accidents in the last year. I asked her, what about the unreported traffic accidents that happened? And she said, well, they wouldn't count. And I think that's kind of interesting, but, uh, we've experienced at our house anyway, on one time, there was a Jeep that came around the corner and hit the curb, and a person fell out of the Jeep and rolled up into our side yard. It was not reported. The individual got up, got back into the Jeep. It appeared that they were a little intoxicated, but I didn't have a breathalyzer or anything to test it. But anyway, that happened. Wasn't too long after that, that a motorcycle came around the corner, bumped the curb, and rolled up into our side yard. Got back on the motorcycle and left. We've had people that have bumped into the guardrails that are there, and they've backed off of them and went on down the corner. I consite to you and my wife and I think several neighbors as well, that there's been a lot of other accidents that have been gone unreported. I don't know if that's going to have any effect on this, on their decision or not, but I'm thinking with this being a bicycle route, and, and if the bicyclists are traveling south on, on Burkitt and come to the stop sign which is there, a lot of times, they have to take kind of a chance to get across the street because they don't know, again, if people are going to turn onto Mishawaka Avenue or turn onto, onto, onto Burkitt, coming off of Mishawaka Avenue. Mishawaka Avenue is actually a residential street, and it ends at Burkitt. Burkitt is a north-south street, and if you go south of there at Club Street, and if you look on the pole on the right-hand side, there's a curve, not a curb, but a curve sign that indicates that Burkitt turns. It doesn't. Burkitt goes straight. So, the people that's crossing, again, they don't know, with the way that the traffic is set up, they painted two yellow lines across it, and people, you watch and you look, and you have numbers of people that cut all the way inside. There's times when I come home and I'm coming down Mishawaka Avenue and stop there to make a left-hand turn, and people will pass me on the right side, bump up over the curb, and go on down Burkitt Avenue off of Mishawaka. So, I've started to stop in the middle of that intersection of my, my, my section of the road so that they can't do that. Then I get a lot of high signs from people and horns honking and a few other things. It's not only me, there's other people that do that. There's been families, and if you notice on that petition, 171 individuals signed it. It's not just me. I tried to get this done some nine or 10 years ago, and I presented some of these problems to, not to, to the council, but to the engineering depart, engineering department and so on. And so, they said to me, oh, we're going to have a meeting. And then, my wife and I were celebrating our 50th wedding anniversary, and we were in Hawaii, and I get a telephone call from some, from the city engineer, and he says, oh, we're going to have this meeting next week. Can you be here? Well, I couldn't. When I got back home, I went down to the city engineer, and he said, oh, we've decided to put a guardrail up from the corner to the alley. Well, I told him that that was not really very smart, because most of the traffic come up in my yard and go into that area. Number one, the curb at the time was level with the street, and they would come up into my, into my yard and go on about their business. So, I said, why don't you just put a section of maybe 20 feet, which he did, and I said, would you mind if I would plant flowers or plant bushes around? He said, no. And recently, someone bumped into, into the guardrail, and he said to me, boy, is those bushes strong. Well, that's, the guardrail was kind of hit, but anyway, he was a little surprised. Uh, but again, at that time, you know, we, we talked to them, presented it to them, but when I came back, he also mentioned something to me that irritated me to no end. And that was in the meeting, or during that meeting, that the chief of police said, well, Mr. Nelson has complained about this so much that more than likely, if we put a stop sign there, he's going to sit there and watch how many people run the stop sign, call the police department up and say he's not doing his job. I was a little irritated about it. Didn't say anything, but I've been, I've been festering this thing for quite a while. And as I've gone on, and I, and I look at these situations and the circumstances, all these things, and when we talked to this engineering department, Mr. Bel, Mr. Belovich, he said to them, and read it, presented it to them, and the assistant engineer said, I drove down by there, and says, that intersection is kind of messed up. Okay? They've taken the crosswalk, if you look, if you look at it, on the, on the west side of Mishawaka Avenue, there's a sidewalk that goes all the way down to Prospect. The only crossing goes across by the guardrail across Burkitt Street. There used to be a crosswalk from my corner over to the other corner across Mishawaka Avenue. They've changed all of that around, and it's not there any longer. Okay? Why they did that, I don't know, but since it's a bike route, and there's no sidewalk that goes on the right side or on the east side of the street all the way down to Prospect, that's all fenced up and so on and so forth, the people got to cross the street, and they need to cross the street if they have to, across Mishawaka Avenue. And I'm here to tell you that a lot of people still do that. And there's a lot of folks that said, we ride our bicycles on the inside of that guardrail where Mishawaka's at, and a lot of the people say, you know, I'm worried about my kids hitting the thing, because there's not much room that's in there. It's very, it's very small. Okay? The guardrail, somebody hit it the other day, and it knocked it back two or three inches as well, unreported accident. That's why I'm, that's why I'm presenting this proposal to you, this petition. And I said, mentioned to the engineering people, and they said, well, we got to do all these reports, all these reports. Um, and that's fine, but please take in consideration the bicyclists, the, the, the people walking, walking the streets, us old goats that walk around and can't run across the street quite as fast as the younger kids can. Someday, someday, somebody's going to get hit there and get seriously injured. I hope it's not your kids or your grandkids. That's why I'm presenting this. And it's, recently, in our neighborhood, they got together too with the people on Prospect. And there's another area that's, that needs to be looked at, and that's at State and Prospect. Okay? That's, since it's a bicycle route, there's no stop sign. There's, there's a stop sign on Prospect going east and west, but on State going north and south into the golf course, there's no stop sign there, and there needs to be, because a lot of people that go by our house go down to the park. Lot of kids go down through there, and I'm telling you, there's a lot of folks that speed down through that street, and there needs to be a stop sign there too, because someday, somebody's going to get hit there. Okay? Any questions?
Thank you, sir, for the information and your passion for this issue. Any questions for Mr. Nelson, Mr. Mamalente?
Thank you, Mr. President. Not necessarily a question, but I just want to applaud Mr. Nelson for his passion and efforts in this, trying to get this taken care of. I take that intersection two times a day, to and from, dropping my kids off at school. And for the last probably five or six months, I've been working with a resident that resides off of Mishawaka Avenue, and her concern is exactly what you had mentioned, the speed. There really isn't a stoplight would be, what the nearest one would be Cedar Street.
Yeah.
So there is a really long stretch where people can gain up speed on the avenue, and especially with the schools, the students exiting off of Mishawaka Avenue. I do concur with you in terms of, it's a very dangerous and confusing intersection, so I do want to applaud you for your efforts in this.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
But one time, they said, if you get a stop sign there, you're going to back traffic up to Lincoln Way. People drop their kids off at the high school, either on State Street, they go Lincoln Way to State Street and drop their kids off, or they go to Studebaker and bring Studebaker down to Mishawaka Avenue. So it's not going to back people up there on that instance, okay? I mean, it's just, I mean, I'm not stupid for crying outside. I know that people are going to pull up there and do a California stop. We all are. Let's be honest about it. I mean, a stop sign is there, but I'm not going to call the police up every time I see it. That's not my job. I've got other things to do besides worrying about whether somebody runs that stop sign or not, but it will slow them down, and it'll give pedestrians a lot more chance. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Nelson, thank you for bringing this, echo what Mr. Mamalente said. You did take it to the right place. I appreciate the information. I agree with you. I've been around that in this community for a long, long time, and that's an intersection that is certainly interesting, to say the least. That's to say the least. But you did take it to the right place, the engineering department. Engineers are analytical, and they want to, you know, study the situation, and that's them by nature. We rely on that as a council. I ask you to keep Mr. Belovich, your councilman, informed, and I ask him to keep us informed, because I think this is important, and if we can nudge a little bit here and there, I would be glad to help do that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I mean, I had two attorneys that signed that petition, and I've also, one of the school council, or the board members, signed that petition. I mean, it's something that's, that neighborhood has talked about for a long time. We've lived there 44 years, and we've seen a lot of changes, and my kids ran across that street like crazy too, and they used to play in the old school city property, right?
Mr. Nelson, just a quick question for you. Walking across the avenue, going from the north side to the south side, how long ago was it that they took that curb and made it solid? Was that?
A couple of years ago, for the, when they changed the curb and they put the grass in there. Anyway, two to three years ago that they changed that, but the people, I mean, does people still, I mean, I used to, when the snowplow goes around that corner, they would pile the snow up there, and I used to take my snow blower and open up both passageways for people to get through there. But it's been at least a couple of years ago that they changed that.
So now, if someone's walking south on Burkitt, what they would have to do is cross from the west side of Burkitt to the east side, and then continue to go south if they were headed towards Lincoln Way.
And go to Club Street, but there's not even a crosswalk at Club Street.
Right.
You know? So I mean, it's really, yeah, it's kind of interesting. I mean, it's.
Well, we appreciate you coming in tonight.
Well, thanks for letting me say my piece. Okay?
You're welcome. Hold on, Mrs. Volker.
I just wanted to say, I met your wife, and I believe I met, did I meet you too, when I was walking one day? And you were out meeting people as they were walking by. I just wanted to say, I've used that to ride my bike, and it is dangerous. I've fallen there trying to get across the street. Behind the guardrail, there's gravel, there's, it's not nice. It's not safe. I agree with you that it needs to be, there needs to be adjustment there.
And a lot of leaf, in fall time, that thing gets filled up with leaves also, and I don't know who is responsible, I mean, there's a fence that goes all along that whole area, and that was put up, I don't know if that was put up when the school had the property as that school, for that area, that that fence was put up, but it's always been up there as well. And so, like I said, it gets leaves in there, and the end of the guardrail to where you turn off to come across is not that, for bicyclists especially, is not that large. So there's a lot of things that needs to be done to that intersection besides the stop signs for the pedestrians. And it's being used a lot, because, like I said, with the bike route and with the people going down to the parks and going to the walkway and all that kind of stuff, if you noticed, a lot of the people were on, just kind of east of us, back up in that area, and almost, there was a family stopped by yesterday that signed it, and they were almost down to Capitol Avenue, and they said, we come this way, I'm still worried about my kids getting hit all the time. And if you watch bicyclists, a lot of times, they'll go all the way to the left side and go along the guardrail and then get up on the sidewalk. They don't get on the sidewalk prior to that, so it is a concern. Thank the good Lord, nobody's gotten hurt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hicksonball. I just have another.
You're not done with us yet, Mr. Nelson.
As the discussion was continuing, I thought to think of another, an idea that may behoove you to mention when you're talking to the engineers department. Maybe perhaps, instead of just looking at the accidents reported at that intersection, maybe go 100 yards or 200 yards from, on the, let's see, it'd be the east or west side, Mishawaka Avenue. I know the resident has been contacting me a few times, parked cars have been hit, et cetera, due to high speeds.
There was an accident like two blocks down last week, when somebody ran a, they ran a stop sign, and there was three cars involved in it, and there were some injuries that was on Burkitt. So it does.
Thank you.
I mean, I hope when they do the investigation, that they take the pedestrians, the bicyclists, and everybody else into consideration as well, because it's not just accidents. There's more to it than accidents, I think.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Nelson? Then, sir, again, thank you. One suggestion that, an additional suggestion that I would have, is that in addition to working with Mr. Belovich, the Engineering Department of the administration, I'm going to ask Mr. Benicki, who is our council representative to the Traffic Commission, to also take a look at this issue and integrate into that, that into the work of the Traffic Commission.
I appreciate that.
And as Mr. Compton said, it's really helpful to us as a legislative body when we have the experts who work in City Hall, take a look at these issues, and that Uniform Traffic Control Manual is a wonderful tool. But I will say that there are also times when the best interests of the community and the will of the community need to supersede the cold, hard letter of that document. So my experience has been that the process works fairly well. There are a lot of people who would like to have a lot of stop signs throughout the community, and I think you would agree with me that we can't have a stop sign anywhere, but that doesn't mean that this isn't a good location to provide some enhanced scrutiny of. So thank you for bringing it to our attention, and between the councilmen who are going to be involved and working with you, and the rest of us, we look forward to a continuing conversation with you and your neighbors about this issue.
I was surprised how many people signed that petition, and it was just people walking by the house. That's what really surprised me. I thought that if I get 40 or 50 people, it'd be one thing, but.
It says a lot, but I'm sure you'd agree with me, we also have to balance the best interests of the entire community. And as wonderful a job as you've done gathering signatures, it's less than a percent of the total residents of Mishawaka. We have to look at it from a total communal standpoint, but what you've done has been very helpful and very educational for us, so again, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor? If so, please come forward to the podium. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak under their privilege of the floor? If so, please unmute your microphone. Thank you. We will then move into unfinished business, of which there is none, and new business. Mr. Benicki.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Hinkle, have you got an update for us on the Piper situation?
Mr. Hinkle, could you come forward to the podium?
Nothing really to report. We, let's see. Yeah, there's nothing new. Nothing new. Nothing's going on there.
They are working there every day. Every day they're working there.
Really? Yeah. See, the police and code enforcement say that there's no activity there.
I talked to a lot of different vendors, whether, you know, it's body or auto parts, everybody's delivering parts there every day. They ain't delivering to an empty building.
Okay. All right.
So I don't know how you get in or prove that. I understand that's the hard part, but they're still going hot and heavy. And then the other side is, there's also a car lot on Lincoln Way that Mr. Piper owns as well, that has cars in disrepair. I mean, missing back tailgates and, I don't think that's the meaning of a car lot, is to have them cars in disrepair like that on this car lot either. So I don't know if he's using that for storage while he's working inside that building.
Yeah. I'll talk to code enforcement about it.
Okay. Thank you. And then, obviously, you don't have anything to do with this, but Mr. Sam DeBeau reached out to me, and he's very unhappy with the Liberty Street Crossing. Says he, you know, he's complaining, complained about it, and nobody's ever doing anything about it. Of course, I realize it's not us, it's the railroad, and I know the mayor did respond to him as well, so he just wanted to make sure that we made that public notice.
Sure.
You know, it's terrible, and I actually go around it because I'm afraid my car's going to fall apart.
Right, and they did. They did, Logan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Hinkle, since we have him up at the podium? Then, second issue first. I would add the concerns of Mrs. Lynn Hicksonball to the Liberty Railroad crossing. I have told her that it's not a city council issue, but anything that could be done by any of our city departments to address that would make things easier for me.
So, thank you. I've actually contacted engineering about that, and I believe somewhere in my email, I have the phone number for, I think it's Canadian Railroad, and it's the railroad who is the, that we need to put pressure on to do it. They did, excuse me, a good job with Logan a couple of years ago, and I know that Liberty was being monitored. I would imagine the pandemic might have had a little bit to do with the delay, because I thought that it was supposed to be done. So I will find that phone number, and I'd be happy to pass that on to all of you, and I would encourage calls to the railroad.
And I have explained that to the concerned resident who lives with me, that this is not a council issue, but rather a railroad issue, but anything that could be done to help with that.
We'll give her the phone number.
It would be very much appreciated.
Tell her I know where she can get it fixed.
Absolutely. And then with regard to the original point that Mr. Benicki made, if you can briefly refresh my memory, is the litigation still pending with regard to Piper's, or has that now moved to dismissal?
No, it's still pending. The next step in that whole process was for Ken Prince to do an inspection of the interior of the building. And I'll have to talk to Ken Prince about what the process is with respect to that, but actually, we have these meetings with the neighborhood enforcement team, and the police and code enforcement tell us they go by there on a regular basis, and there's nothing going on. So they're doing it pretty stealthily, whatever they're doing.
Didn't we withdraw their ability to work out of there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. No, they shouldn't be doing anything in there, other than he can store cars in there, but he shouldn't be working on cars. But if you're saying that parts people are dropping parts off there, something's going on, but.
Absolutely.
Again, at the last neighborhood enforcement meeting, that, it comes up every time, and we talked about it, and police and code enforcement said they go by, Joe Van Nevel goes by there on a regular basis, and even John Rogeman drives by there, and he says, there's nothing going on there, you know? We've been acutely aware of it because of Mr. Evans' concerns about it. So it's not like we're ignoring it, but I guess the police would say, well, if we don't catch somebody going in and out of there, what do we do?
Right. And I'm glad you made mention of Mr. Evans, because, not to speak on his behalf, but I'm confident if he was with us this evening and able to attend, that he would echo the comments that he hears from neighbors, as he's reported to me, that there's still activity there. So somewhere there's a disconnect between the perception of the neighborhood, the information that Mr. Benicki shared with you, and what our, you know, various agencies are able to discern. So anything that could be done, try to get to the bottom of this, not to continue to pester an individual business owner, but if we're going to take action as the legislative body to either grant a variance or to revoke it, I think we all would agree that those actions should be observed by the individuals who are subject to those actions.
Sure, yeah. But whatever he's doing, I drive by there myself, and I don't see anything going on. I noticed his car is there sometimes. He has a Cadillac that's parked there, but, I mean, he could still be in there. And he did take a lot of the cars that were in the lot and put them inside, and, I'm not defending the guy.
Right.
I'm just saying that it's hard to catch them unless we put somebody, you know.
Do an inspection.
There you go.
Yeah.
What we could do is what we could do, but thank you for your help on that.
Okay.
Mrs. Volker.
Thank you. I have a follow-up on the Liberty Drive railroad crossing. According to Clint Marler of Canadian National, Liberty Drive is scheduled for repair in 2022.
Wow.
I can think of at least one residence in Mishawaka where that's going to be a problem, but I will pass the information along.
So what I would suggest, and again, I'll get this phone number for you. The, let's see. Yes, they did some temporary repair work at Liberty Drive Crossing a couple of years ago. I would say, we still, I've got this phone number, I'm going to send this all to you, and if nothing else, perhaps, if there's temporary repair work that needs to be done, we could put some pressure on them to get that work done.
So does the engineering department? Can they do anything? Are they involved?
We can ask Andrew to do it, or Janelle, to call, but they're asking, they're asking us to call. They do have a live person answer their customer service phone. Yep.
Excellent.
And there's also an email. I'll send this to you guys.
Well, thank you for that information.
Okay.
Everybody, I'll send it to everybody. Actually, I think I'll just send it to you, Debbie.
That's fine.
Would you mind?
Good idea. I will do that.
Thank you.
And with that, is there any other new business to come before the council? Mr. Mamalente?
Thank you, Mr. President. Not necessarily new business, but the list is long, and I apologize in advance if I leave anybody out, but I just wanted to give special thanks. A couple of my colleagues and I attended the new ribbon cutting, formerly known as Humms Park, but now appropriately named Heroes Park. Just wanted to thank Mayor Dave Wood, his youth council, Jamie Wood, Luanne Hazen, Central Services, Mr. Blasco, and all the countless others that put a hand in that project. Super, super excited about it. It's an amazing park. A lot of great people were dedicated in that ceremony, so just wanted to tip my hat to the mayor and the youth council and all those that were involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Compton.
Mr. President, I want to revisit something we talked about, and I started to talk about in the pre-meeting. I did a little legwork, and there was a carnival at the mall the weekend of the shooting. So I would like to know how, when it's determined, the Board of Public Works approves something there, and we approve something there, and how that is determined, and who determines that? That's my question. And I don't know who to ask about that, so I'm asking for your help on helping me figure that out.
Well, my suggestion would be, we can either inquire of Mr. Hinkle and/or Mr. Spear, who's here on behalf of the Planning Department this evening, or we can leave that as a rhetorical question and ask the gentleman to get back to us with an answer to that question as we contemplate other meetings that we may have to try to learn more about the state of public safety in Mishawaka.
Mr. Hinkle? Mr. Hinkle, yes. Is that something you can help us with? How that's, I'd like to know really who, who and how it's determined it comes to us or it goes to the Board of Public Works?
Well, it, it went to the Board of Public Works. It goes to that and then they have the police department review it. And then Chief Wodkowski says, he really gives thumbs up or thumbs down. If it, uh, so if he doesn't see any problems with it, then he says, okay. The people came here, they had their, their petitioners and they explained what they were gonna do and where they were gonna have the carnival and when they were gonna have it. And, uh, they testified to the Board of Public Works and then the board approved it, their petition, uh, to have the carnival.
So when, when Gates comes to us to sells cars out there, why do they come to us and not the Board of Public Works?
As I recall, they did to the Board of Public Works. Now, I don't know why, why do they do it, why do they do it to the council as well? I don't know.
We ended up approving, we used to approve it yearly. Then we approved a three-year period. Uh, I think, I strongly feel that something like a carnival at the mall should come here. And I don't know how to, uh, if that's an ordinance that we need to work on to, to make sure that those kinds of things happen in the future, we can do that. But, uh, that's, in my opinion, that's not a decision the Board of Public Works and the police should be solely responsible for.
So I'll bring that up tomorrow at our, at the Board of Public Works and our staff meeting afterward.
Appreciate that. And I would appreciate their input and their, much like Planning Commission, their approval, uh, you know, a thumbs up or thumbs down as it comes to us.
Sure. And my follow-up suggestion would be that we ask Mr. Triple R. Attorney to also consult with Mr. Hinkle, Planning Department, the Board of Public Works, and number one, to give us a little bit of an overview with regard to the legality of the two approval processes. One that goes to the Board of Public Works, one which goes to us. And then also to chime in with regard to what, if any, options we have by ordinance or otherwise to try to look at that process and review maybe a change in it.
Thank you.
I just wanna make a little follow-up if you don't mind, Mr. President.
Please, Mrs. Volker.
So I do read the Board of Public Works minutes often. And, you know, there are lots of different things that get approved there that don't come to the council. And I'm not suggesting that I need to, we need to be approving a street closing for a, you know, for a, a block party. So I think there's, if something like, you know, an event at a mall comes to us, where does the line stop between what stays at the Board of Public Works and, and what would the magnitude be? What would it have to be in order to come and, you know, to the council? So I just wanted to throw that out to you.
And Mrs. Volker, I think you, those points are well taken. I think that as a general statement, many, not all, but many of the actions that are taken by the Board of Public Works are, are driven by the fact that a series of city councils over a series of years have delegated certain legislative authority to the Board of Public Works because of efficiency and the, and the fact that they meet on a weekly basis. Um, the legislative work of the city would bog down if we did approve every last thing. Where this type of issue lies, if in fact it's within our jurisdiction, if you will, to take action on it, is a good discussion to have. Um, so that's why I think it might be beneficial for all of us to have Mr. Triple chime in on this to, um, provide us with the background that we need to have a ongoing dialogue of where we wanna go, if at all, from here to make some changes. But thank you for those points. I agree with it.
If I can just make a kinda, I think it's set up, a lot of it is set, set up by state statute and it depends on whether you're a town, the city of the third class, city of the second class. Everything goes like, you know, because a town, a three-member, five-member town council is gonna have the authority over everything in the city because they're not gonna have a Board of Public person. So it's a balance of powers in a sense.
I agree. That's part of the analysis, but I also think that, again, for those reasons, that, that the legislative body has empowered the Board of Public Works to take certain steps. And I'm not at all indicating that I think that's totally a bad thing.
Right.
Um, but for these kinda conversations, maybe should cause us to take a look at certain issues and revisit whether we think that the current structure is the proper one.
And I'll pull that ord, that last ordinance. What was it for Gates or who was it for, for the car?
I, I, as I recall, it was Gates Automotive.
It was Gates the last time I remember.
Gates. I'll try to find that last ordinance and see if there's something in it that triggers.
It was, and I agree with Mr. Compton. It started out that we provide annual approval and then we gave some longer blanket approval, um, at one point in time. So it's, it, it, these are good conversations to have and I appreciate everybody bringing, uh, those answers up.
Do you want to start?
Um, please. Any other new business to come before the council? This may be the most active new business, uh, agenda that we've ever had in, in these many years. Um, then I will add to it very briefly. Um, regular attendees to our council meetings or those who have become regular viewers during the pandemic may have noticed that this evening, for the first time in well over a year, we are all on the dais together. Um, consistent with the CDC guidelines, people by choice may wear masks, but we're no longer enforcing a, a, a face mask mandate, um, as part of our meetings, which is a positive sign and it's yet another indicator that we're all, um, moving back toward a state of normalcy in the city of Mishawaka. Um, I do think it's important for us to remember, however, that pursuant to Governor Holcomb's executive order, which Mr. Triple referenced earlier, and emergency continued conditions, and these are his words, emergency conditions continue to exist related to the pandemic throughout the state of Indiana, including in, in Mishawaka. Um, I also didn't call for a moment of silence this evening as we have done throughout the pandemic and consistent not only with the, uh, governor's executive order, but the state of facts in the United States. As of today, there are more than 597,000 COVID-related deaths that we've experienced as a nation. So while we have all these positives, while vaccination continues throughout the community, while we're reverting to some of our normal business practices, I think it's incumbent on all of us and everybody who resides within Mishawaka to continue to follow the guidance, to continue to act prudently and to help ensure that we come through this as well as we can on the other side. We're so close, I think all of us would agree, that we would hate to see any backsliding continue as we are near the finish line. So thank you for everybody's efforts to try to get us to this point and for your ongoing efforts as well. And with that, if there is no other new business to come before the council, a morsum to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.